Hi, I'm Mary Tuamanen. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters here in Lincoln County. And I'd like to welcome you to the Granville Candidate Forum for Village Council. There are three of us who are co-hosting the event today. The League of Women Voters, also the Granville Chamber Alliance, and Denison University's Center for Leadership and Involvement. We are all nonpartisan organizations, which means these three organizations are not supportive of political parties or political candidates. So what we offer today is a nonpartisan voter education event. I want to take just a minute to explain a forum as opposed to a debate. Our event this evening is not a debate, it's a forum, which means that we have specific questions. The same questions will be presented to each of our candidates. Each candidate will have an equal amount of time to respond to the question. And there's no refuting or rebutting between candidates in the forum. Questions were submitted in advance by community members. We got far too many questions that we can use, so we called them, we kind of grouped them by themes, and we gave the candidates six questions for their preparation. And we've chosen three of those that we'll be presenting today during the forum. In terms of the format, each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. And then each candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer one of three questions. And we'll go through each. Each candidate will respond to each question before we move on to the next question. And then each candidate will have a minute and a half for a closing statement. We have a timekeeper. Amy is our timekeeper. And she will wave her flag when candidates have 30 seconds remaining and when the time is up. We've drawn names to determine who would speak first. So Alex will speak first with regard to the opening statement. And just a final reminder, we've asked candidates to turn off their phones, and candidates have agreed not to use the recording in any political advertising. This is consistent with Federal Communication Commission requirements, that any recordings of forums have to be used in their entirety. And there's no editing done except by media or for purposes of nonpartisan voter education. Lastly, the recording, as well as the livestream, we're doing a recording today. And the recording will be posted on the League of Women Voters website and the League of Women Voters Facebook page. It will be up by Friday. It may be up sooner than that, but by Friday for sure. So let's go ahead and start with our opening statements. We have five candidates for three village council positions. And the term of office is a four-year term. And Alex will be the first person presenting today.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alex Morrow. I was born and raised here in Granville and really had a fantastic childhood and upbringing. And part of that then resulted in me wanting to bring my family and my children back here to Granville, to grow up in the same environment, go to the same school system that I went to, and really experience the special Granville that I knew and loved. And so I've been back for about five years now and have loved being part of the community. I've been able to be engaged with various organizations, such as the Granville Historical Society, serving on the board there. But my background is in engineering and science, and I've been doing that for 20 to 25 years, really solving very large problems with multidisciplinary teams. And I think bringing that expertise, that knowledge and capabilities to the council will serve as a meaningful way to interpret some of the data that we're getting and to help look at some of the modern challenges that we have here in facing Granville right now with the adjacent developments that are on the periphery of Granville, as well as ensuring that we have and support our local businesses within Granville. I love being here. I love being part of the various organizations, such as the Granville Running Club, and I'm really happy to be here. So thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Hurtfield, and I'm your current mayor for the village of Granville. I'm in my 24th year serving on council and my 20th year as mayor. My mother's family came to this area on horseback in the 1820s, the late 1820s. They forded the Ohio River, and they cut pathways through to get up here while Ohio was still considered the West. And due to some of those factors, it puts a weight on me. It's a good weight of the care and keeping and preservation of who we are. You know, we're all drawn to Granville for a lot of similar reasons, for the charm, for the small-town feel, for the great school system, for the safety, for the connections we form through friends and family and our neighbors. And those aspects of who we are, they don't happen by accident. They happen with thoughtful planning and people that care. And not just the village council, all the groups, like the groups that are here today, all of these groups that care and keep and love this community. And, you know, I've been here all my life, and I want to say I could talk for too long, but we're faced with generational change. We're faced with good and bad. We need steady, stable leadership. I provided that. I've participated. I've helped with the planning. And I'd like to continue to do so, to provide permanent solutions that are in the best interest of this community and this county.
Hi, my name's Diane Marshall. I'd like to thank the Chamber and the League of Women Voters for allowing our voices to be heard tonight. If elected to village council, I will be deeply committed to serving our community with integrity, common sense, and a vision for a vibrant, sustainable future. During an extensive career in marketing and advertising in Chicago, I successfully managed large teams and established operational policies for top worldwide agencies. Currently, I serve on the Tree and Landscape Commission and am board president of the Granville Area Community Improvement Corporation, whose mission is to facilitate the beneficial development of our economy by investing in infrastructure, nurturing current and future businesses, and fostering partnerships to ensure continued prosperity. I also work with the Lincoln County Foundation. I will work tirelessly to preserve what makes Granville special while addressing the challenges and opportunities ahead. I will commit to collaborating collectively with fellow council members, township trustees, and village administration, be a visible, approachable leader. I will listen to residents' concerns, prioritize fiscal responsibility, and collaborate with local businesses and neighboring communities to help strengthen our position with the county and the region. Thank you.
I'm Matt McGowan. My first time ever being in Granville was in high school and then also in college. I came to run on the dirt indoor track at Denison. Then I came back and ran the Firecracker Five a few times and actually won the race. Then I decided, where am I going to live someday? And after moving four times before 7th grade, because my dad was in the military, I decided a lot of reasons why I wanted to move to Granville, and I bought a house 33 years ago and lived here since. Like many residents, I commuted to Columbus. I worked at Waterson High School as a business teacher, coached cross-country and track. My brother and I started Run Ohio, a running publication. I used to run competitively before I got older. And I wanted to get involved with the community after my first or second year here, and so I joined the Kiwanis Club, because they do the 4th of July celebration and they do a lot of other nice things for the community. Then I joined the Chamber of Commerce. Then I ran for council. I served on council for 20 years, serving on numerous committees. I was the vice mayor for two years and the mayor for two years. While on council, besides doing that, I also tried to bridge the gap with the township trustees and other elected officials. Then I also helped out at various concession stands, at the football game, track meet, and things of that sort. After retiring from Waterson, I saw that Granville needed some substitute teachers. So I substitute taught at the high school and middle school for two years, and then I was employed just two years ago, full-time, at the middle school. So that's what I'm presently doing now, working at the middle school. Thank you.
Hello to the community watching and to the Denison student observer who's here tonight. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Kim Keathler-Ball, and I have lived in Granville for over 30 years. My husband Dave and I have raised four children here, kindergarten through 12th grade, in the Granville schools. I'm in my fourth year of a four-year term on council. I am grateful to serve the community in this capacity. I've invested a tremendous amount of time and energy during my term on village council. For this last several years, I've also been a small business owner with a bookstore in our downtown. I've been an active member of the Chamber of Commerce and represented on the board of Explore Lincoln County, which is our tourism board. I'm a co-founder of the Granville Center for the Arts. We are in our second year and enjoy being an anchor arts organization at the west end of Broadway near the Four Corner churches and the Denison Eisner Center. The center's premise is art for all, and it's an inclusive space to collaborate, learn, and celebrate art. With its renovated spaces, we have hosted monthly art clubs, art workshops, theater, and dance. Most of all, it's a welcoming space. From my work in the village, I would say that I know the many layers of people here in our town and what is important to us as a community. As an incumbent, I can say government is full of deliberative processes and is not built for speed. However, we've worked very hard as a council to be responsive to the rapid changes coming our way, especially with the development of chip factories, data centers, power plants, and other supporting industries. I am glad to be part of the process governing our community and proud of the ability we have to engage in civil discourse to make the decisions that help us be a thoughtful, responsible, safe, and forward-looking community.
Thank you. My name's Steve Matheny. I'm the executive director of the Granville Area Chamber of Commerce. And I offer the first question, and Melissa, this will be directed to you to begin. The question is, what is your vision for the community in 10 years? How would it be similar to or different from the current community? If elected, what specific actions would you take to help make your vision a reality?
Thanks for the question, Steve. My vision is to continue to work on the projects that we have underway, which are building a coalition with our neighboring jurisdictions for solutions for water and wastewater. Water is a finite resource. You only pollute it one time, and that's it. We could impact our future generations for hundreds of years to come if we don't do this right. So I want to see those things solved permanently. I'd like to see us continue with our JED, our Joint Economic Development District, and improve on that and enhance through the businesses down Route 16 corridor, that we help expand that, get some of the burden off of the residents of the property taxes, that we continue to be a vital community, our downtown is vital, and that we also work on having a cross-section of families in this community. I know part of the questions are affordability. You know, right now, we're at a tipping point where we need to really focus on affordable housing for young families and that they're able to be here so that there's a cross-section of people in our schools, living, working, and all being together, retired, empty nesters, young people, families, children. That's what makes a community, and that's what I hope we still see in 10 years from now, and that we have clean water, we have our wastewater sorted out, we have thriving businesses.
Granville will thrive if we take actions on the most challenging initiatives. Our neighbors are taking on aggressive approach in wanting to control our water supply. We need to be smart and collaborative while ensuring whatever decision we make on water control, that we are not risking in any way the safety of our residents. The unique and quaint character of Granville will remain, but I envision improvements in the downtown area with less vacant storefronts, a vibrant atmosphere with a variety of shops and restaurants. Main Street in the Mill District area will be hopping with businesses and entertainment venues that make Granville the place to be. We will see expanded sidewalks where they don't currently exist and more parking options to better match the residents' and visitors' demand for easy access to community events. We will need to review policies that reduce the cost of operating a business in downtown Granville. I believe, in some cases, the cost of running a restaurant per square foot tax in Granville is close to 30 to 40 percent higher than what it costs in Newark.
I'd like to see Granville in 10 years having a vibrant business district, quality schools, ample green space and recreational area, continuing being a safe community, a community where people have different opinions but work together to continue to make Granville a great place to live, dealing with infrastructures, roads, water, sewer, electric, all those, a community of neighbors helping neighbors. Whether you're an older person or a younger person, hopefully some of your neighbors would be able to help you out. I know I shoveled some sidewalks in my days, and I got a snow blower, and I helped some people out, but I have a small snow blower, and we have two bigger snow blowers down the street, and they come around and do most of the sidewalks in my neighborhood. Our communities will still, seniors can still afford to live here in their lifelong homes. Working with other village council members and township trustees and other elected officials in the community to create a working relationship with all elected officials to maintain and improve the quality of life we all enjoy in Granville and in Lincoln County.
My vision for our community in the next 10 years includes more small green spaces, a public swimming pool, large green space with usable paths, playgrounds, cooling spaces to beat the heat. There's a vocal group that has been lobbying for more indoor recreation space, and we need to address that. I think it's best to have what we need locally, the less we have to drive, the better. I see our main street having lovely shops and restaurants. I see us having developed some creative parking solutions. I see our town being clean and bright, our homes and properties well-maintained, and our school campuses should look full and interesting. I think our community will continue to grow for sure. If we can keep growth moderately slow with smaller numbers, it will be easier to deal with. However, when we had a large development, we were able to maintain our community. We may have to grow and figure out how to still be Granville. It's hard to contain a good thing. Our lovely town with good schools attracts more people. I think our town will continue to have a historical feel. Hopefully, our downtown buildings will experience some renewal. The Chase Building is a good example. Our buildings could use some work. I hope we can maintain having a retail mix in town, and aren't we enjoying some of the newer shops throughout the village? Our restaurant scene is good for a small town. And I know that village planning will continue to place a high priority on walkability. Housing presents a greater challenge, and as a community, we are resistant to change and new building, whatever it is, and we'll have to work through that.
I see 10 years from now, Granville being much like it is now. The thing that draws many of us to Granville, the unique nature, what makes it special, I want to maintain that and enhance upon it, to bring more vibrancy to the downtown area, to include more shops, more restaurants, to attract more visitors to our village, to spend their money, to see what makes us special. And I think there's a great opportunity to that. The shops and the restaurants are just one area. As Kim mentioned, the parks and the green space are another strong draw for many of our visitors to Granville, and I want to continue that. I want to ensure the development that happens around Granville is controlled in a way that Granville has a seat at the table. I think that's important, both to be proactive in a way so that we can have a seat at the table, and that's in partnership with the township, with our neighboring communities, and the county commissioners. All of those need to come together to be able to create the right kind of overlay districts and the right kind of partnerships, much like Columbus's Big Darby Accord, where they were able to protect the land and the farming land around the villages. I think that's critical for us, to maintain that, to keep the way that Granville is, that keeps it special and doesn't dilute the identity of Granville. Thank you.
So the second question is, we're asking candidates to briefly describe the role and responsibilities of a village council person. What experience, skills, and beliefs do you have that make you an exceptional candidate for this position? And we're asking that you give us specific examples.
A village council member's primary duty is to listen to residents and proactively find ways to accommodate the concerns within policies that are in the best interest of the community. This includes enacting ordinances and resolutions, setting policies for zoning, approving budgets, addressing safety concerns, and overseeing maintenance and development of village properties. I genuinely love Granville. I recognize that things have changed since I was a teenager and since I've returned from Chicago. I understand the complexities of situations to make progress in a setting with often competing and conflicting interests. My diverse professional background and deep community involvement make me uniquely qualified to serve on village council. As I said before, I serve on the Tree and Landscape Commission, I'm board president of the Granville Area CIC, and I work for the Lincoln County Foundation. I have leadership skills, I am community-engaged, fiscally responsible, collaborative, and a common-sense decision-maker committed to Granville's future. Thank you.
Council responsibility is to represent the public interest and help guide the community's future. To hire a village manager. While I was on council, we appointed four different village managers. Budgetary oversight, making sure our tax dollars are spent wisely. I try to be accessible to residents through my many activities and being in town. Try to keep residents informed of what's going on. When I was first on council, we would get our packets, just an example, like the day before we'd have the meeting. But I was able to get the council packets the weekend before, so not only can the resident see what's going to go on in the council meeting, but also you could do some of your own background to see how you wanted to look at the issues. When I was first elected to council, it was like the village against the world. They didn't want to have anything to do with the township trustees. They didn't want to have anything to do with the neighboring communities. Now, again, that's something we have to work on and continue to work on. One of the little things I did early on is I reached out to the trustees, and we actually walked together in the 4th of July parade, the Kiwanis 4th of July Parade, with the trustees and the village council. So again, that's something that we have to continue to do, is reach out to the trustees, reach out to the other elected officials in the community, and try to develop a working relationship so we're not blindsided when something happens. Thank you.
Council meets twice a month, usually with a robust agenda. We receive notebooks with information as to what will be discussed, background information, legislation, reports, and pertinent budget information. It's our responsibility to attend the meetings and to be prepared. We each have committee assignments. For example, I'm currently on planning and zoning, and we each have commissions we are assigned to. I'm currently serving on the arts commission. We, as council, direct the village staff, and the village staff manages and supports us. Our mutual relationship is what runs our village. As council members, we are the eyes and ears of the community. Our job is to listen to our neighbors and the citizens of Granville and share information, and that happens almost every day. My background, in addition to being a mom, my favorite, I describe myself as having three career arcs: 10 years working for AT&amp;T Bell Laboratories and Documentation Management, 10 years in ministry, and 10 years in retail, with overlap between all of those. At AT&amp;T, I was part of a large corporation that manufactured and developed our communications network and received computer, technical, and management training. I find all of that training and experience useful as a council member, and I am deeply committed to service work, and I view serving on council as giving to my community by participating in its governance. I believe in the local government as a way to affect our daily lives positively and directly, from keeping up with roads, sidewalks, and traffic, and to supporting the arts and maintaining what keeps us engaged in peaceful, fun, and satisfying ways.
I go to a number of the village council meetings, and I've really been engaged and enjoyed the dialogue that happens on the council. I think the council has done a fantastic job navigating a number of complex issues that have faced our village. I would invite everybody to come out, either sit and listen and hear what goes on. It's fascinating to listen to, and it's been inspiring to go to these meetings. I want to be able to bring my expertise, my scientific and engineering background, I think brings forward a unique perspective that could be extremely valuable to the council, such as the air quality monitoring that's going on on the periphery of Granville, things like the Intel Plant and others. We want to make sure that the air quality of Granville is maintained, but when we collect that data, what do we do with it? My background gives me the ability to help interpret that data and provide unique and innovative solutions that can push Granville into the future. Thank you.
The role of village council is quite complex. And, you know, first and foremost, we try to enact the will of the people and the will of the community. And through that, it's budgeting, making sure there's a balanced budget, that we have funds that we're fiscally responsible and stable, that we have careful planning, zoning, road paving, water and sewer infrastructure. You know, people forget about the water until it doesn't turn on right, or it's cloudy, or something else is wrong. Those are important pieces. Our zoning text, our growth, economic development, existing business retention. You know, we have a large business for sale right now downtown Buxton. You know, that needs to go the right way for all of us in the community. We have to continue to collaborate with our stakeholders, the REC District, the Chamber of Commerce, Denison, our township trustees, build relationships, keep our relationships tight with St. Albans, Alexandria, Johnstown, all of the other neighboring areas, so that we lock arms and we stay together and we're able to stand up and recognize ourselves 100 years from now. My experience in business and on council, I've been in the construction industry for 32 years doing financial and project management, and I understand the processes of council budgeting, how to earn a living, and how to make a payroll, and so I know all those meaningful things about money, value, and property management.
That brings us now to our third question of the evening, and that question will go to Matt. But the question is, what is your vision of sustainability and the environmental future of the community? How is your vision different from or similar to current environmental policies being implemented at the local level? What specific policies would you support and oppose? Matt?
You know, green space preservation is very important to the most of the individuals in this community. While on council, the Granville Golf Course, the village and township work together to create a conservation easement for the front part of the golf course so it would always be green, using green space money wisely to help preserve our royal character. When I was on council, they were talking about green space one time, and I suggested the Brindu property. And the mayor at the time said, "It's not for sale." It wasn't, Melissa, by the way. And I said, "Well, David died, and it will be for sale sometime soon." When I became the mayor, Vice Mayor Candy Moore, worked with the township trustees, and the front lawn was bought with green space money, and the back part was bought with village money without having additional tax purposes. That's what needs to be done, is to have full sight of what might be available and use it to the best of our ability. We now have the Lincoln County Community Center there for the whole town of Granville as well as the rest of Lincoln County. Recently, I added in my will my side yard to green space, so I put my money where my mouth is. Also, I support renewable energy with support from state and federal programs, encouraging residents to do what they can. If we have solar panels, I think they should be put on tops of buildings, not on the agricultural land. Encourage race reduction and recycling by the village and residents. And again, working with all neighboring communities, as well especially with the trustees, to make sure that we do what's right for the town. Thank you.
Sustainability and the environmental future of our community are regular topics with the village council. There's been a longstanding sustainability committee in Granville that village council participates in and also provides leadership. And one of the specific things that has happened while I've been on council is the revision of our solar panel code. At the early readings, it was quickly apparent that we were not on the right track, and village council heard the citizens who came to speak on its unworkability. The sustainability committee and village staff worked together, and council heard revised legislation that made it possible to have a workable code and for people to do it in a way that made technological sense. Another example of village council being active in sustainability is in our choice of refuse holler. We had several choices before us, and after deliberation, we chose Rumkey because they are an industry leader in recycling. I see the village of Granville continuing to move toward more sustainability with regard to power. For example, the Brindu Mansion property plans to install solar panels on its pole barn. Continuing to diversify our power sources so that we have multiple sources is safeguarding our future. We are developing redundancy with our water sources, as evidenced in supplying village water to the intermediate school and still having access to their wells as backup. I support policies that point us toward diversifying our resources so that we are not solely dependent on one source, and I'm willing to listen and make assessments based on reason as we go forward, rather than deciding upfront yes or no on a particular one.
Part of my engineering background has been environmental technologies and programs, and I had a strong passion in future-looking technologies. I've been electric vehicle adopter for many years. I've been an advocate of solar and wind power as well. But for Granville, I see what we have. We have our natural resources that need to be protected and maintained for future generations, as well as connectivity through our trail network, through our parks, and through the rest of our village. I see our town as a very, very vibrant, active community. I see people on the trails all the time. I see people moving around, biking. I love seeing the kids go through the neighborhoods in the bikes and walking around. This is the Granville that I knew and love and still see today. And so there's an active participants, and I want to ensure that we have the capabilities here within Granville to serve the needs of the younger generation and older generation, to make sure everyone has access to the recreation facilities and keep those clean. to make sure everyone has access to the recreation facilities and keep those clean and healthy for everyone involved.
The village has been very active in trying to stay on the forefront of sustainability. Our council member Laura Mickelson has done a great job heading up that committee on our behalf, and in other ways, you know, we've addressed that through our electrical energy and aggregation. We deal with that through the trash hauling and who we select as far as, you know, the best recycling, what they do with that, what happens at the facility, what happens with the waste after it gets to the facility. Are they reusing it? Is there a further step? Through our zoning, being adaptive to who we are today as a society, and that Granville isn't stuck in the past and that we can be adaptive as the world moves forward. When we put new businesses in and we look at the buildings that are going to be built and the zoning, if you look at the new building that's down on South Main Street, you'll notice a rain garden in the front, that the stormwater's diverted there and recycled into the aquifer. Those are parts of sustainability. The tree planting, the native species, the Tree City USA, you know, all of the different things, protecting our water. Our water is our most important key for sustainability that will protect us for the future, and that's the most important piece that we have to focus on as a council and as a community, that our water's safe, that we protect it, and that we know where it is in the future.
I think we should always improve and maintain our sidewalks for safe walkability forever forward. Add bike lanes and trails and improve what we have. I use the New Granville Road Trail quite often. It's in desperate need of repair, making it ridable for bicycles and wheelchairs. Kids should have the ability to ride their bikes safely to school. We should require new construction to incorporate Ohio native plants and trees into all landscape plans and not permit any invasive species. And I'm glad you brought up the Tree City USA, Melissa. We are currently in our 33rd year, and we should keep that up. We should expand and protect our open green space program and continue to educate and integrate sustainability initiatives in our school. And I also looked this up. We should explore Denison's initiatives in their recycling programs, such as the food waste to fertilizer program, and potentially expand that to the village. I know that that fertilizer is used to enrich farmer, local farmers' soil and our landscapes. I think it's an awesome idea. We should encourage the community to contribute monetarily or through volunteering to help preserve our history, such as with our museums, historical properties, and cemeteries. If we want these unique properties to remain, we must all contribute in one way or another.
Thank you all. This brings us now to our closing statement segment. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes for a closing statement, and we will begin with you. Kim, please. Thank you.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters, the Granville Chamber of Commerce, and Denison University for this opportunity. I appreciate being able to be seen and heard with my own voice to answer the important questions that you all have. I bring a long-term knowledge of the many layers of our community to my council work. I appreciate the specialness of Granville for our families. This community has been a safe and caring place for my children to grow up, surrounded by great educational opportunities. Our community can continue to evolve and be better in terms of our lovely downtown with shops, restaurants, and walkability. Our community and our economy will continue to diversify through the efforts that we have made and are making to put in place organizational structures to help and develop. We are working on our comprehensive plan as a community. We are working hard at protecting our water, air, and soil, and our water rights. Granville Village Council is not a one-person show. It takes a team willing to work together with each other and staff. This willingness is important at every meeting and every day. I strive to be a good team player as well as a leader when necessary. We are a functional council, and we keep things moving forward. We build relationships with our surrounding communities, which makes us stronger as a whole and enables us to resist being overrun by larger organizations. I bring the experience of having been on council for four years, having raised my family here, and being active in our community in many ways. I want this to be a place where I can host my future grandchildren and that we can continue to be proud of. Thank you, and I ask you for your vote.
Thank you, everyone online watching tonight. I really appreciate you joining in to be part of the local political scene here. I'm very passionate about Granville. I love this town. I was really, really happy to come back here. It's a blessing to come through the school and see the generations of my family, and my kids are now fifth generation within Granville, to go down to high school to see the family portraits on the wall and the class photos. It's really special to see. I'm really excited for the opportunity to serve on the council, and I would very much want to try to put together a framework that we can deal with the annexation and development challenges that are happening on the periphery. I think there's multiple areas that we can use policy and partnership and collaboration with our adjacent neighbors to enact elements to help protect the Granville schools, the way of life, because development isn't just kids flooding the schools. It's everything. It's our resources, it's our utilities, it's the traffic on the roads. And in talking with everyone in the village, I've seen the challenges that people face from the potential of these development opportunities, and I want to serve on the council and help protect Granville and make, and keep it as charming as it is. Thank you.
And again, thank you to the Chamber, Denison, League of Women's Voters. Appreciate you having us here tonight. And I just wanted to say, it's been my honor to serve as your mayor. It's been my honor to serve all these years on the village council. This place is really so great, and I know why, and we all know why we're here. I learned a little bit more about why I'm here and why I'm staying. I was, I don't want to get emotional, but I had a really massive health issue that I faced, and the embrace that this community gave me while I was going through that was so overwhelming, I can't even put it into words. And that's why we all love to be here. I felt it, and I know it, and I thank this community so much for what they have. And I thank you for the confidence you've given me, and I ask you to give that to me again. We're facing two huge challenges. Our water, well, our water pollution and development, and I want to see, we're in the works of all those things, and I want to see permanent solutions that we don't have to keep losing sleep over this stuff. It's permanently solved. We don't have to worry about other municipalities annexing in our school district and exploiting us. We don't have to see other entities exploiting our finite water resources. I thank you. I love this community, and I, this is all a tribute, all these people that are here tonight, of who we are.
Granville faces both opportunities and challenges. Our downtown area will see positive changes. We must support local businesses while managing growth. Our schools are our cornerstone, yet we must ensure they remain well-funded without overburdening taxpayers. We must invest in our infrastructure, from roads to utilities, to keep pace with our needs. Whether addressing housing, water, traffic, or green space expansion and protection, I will work with fellow council members to focus on solutions that reflect Granville's values. I believe in Granville's potential to remain a place for families to thrive, businesses to prosper, and neighbors to connect. My commitment is personal. I want to ensure that future generations have the same opportunities and experiences that I've enjoyed over the years in a community that values heritage, fosters strong connections, and thoughtfully plans for the future. I invite all residents to share ideas, concerns, and hopes for Granville. We are in this together, and together we can build a stronger, even more vibrant, fiscally sustainable community for all to enjoy for years to come. With that said, I ask for your vote. I promise to serve you well. Thank you again to the Chamber, League of Women Voters, and Denison for this opportunity.
I also would like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Granville Chamber, and Denison for providing this forum. Also, I'd like to wish all the other various candidates running for public office, not only in Granville but in Licking County, hopefully they'll be successful and continuing to improve the community. Also, I moved here because I didn't want to have to move again, so I planned to live and die here, even though I didn't get born here. But, again, that's what, I came here because of what Granville is. So I hope when you're considering who to vote for for council, I might be one of the ones you consider, because my past experience as a council member, being the mayor and vice mayor, my past oversight of village spending, my involvement in the community, my willingness to work with the community members and elected officials to make sure Granville is what it is and what we want it to be in the future. And finally, for anyone who's watching today or anyone in this village, I encourage you to get involved, to help make those things happen, to find something you can volunteer for. I don't care what it is, whether it's one day a year, whether it's one day a week, but get out and get involved to continue to make Granville what we all want it to be. Thank you.
So, thanks to each of our candidates, and thanks to those of you who are viewers this evening. I just want to remind you that the forum is being recorded, and as of Friday, perhaps earlier than that, it will be posted on the League of Women Voters Facebook page, which is League of Women Voters of Licking County, it's easy to remember, and our website as well, which is LWVlikingCounty.org. I also want to mention that there was a glitch in the recording earlier of the township trustees. There was about five minutes missing in the first, I'm sorry, in the livestream, not the recording. So if you missed that, then the live, the recording will include that information, so come back to watch, to watch that as well. A reminder to voters that early voting started today. You can go to the Licking County Administration Building on Second Avenue. The hours for early voting are posted on the Licking County Board of Elections website, and also if you'd like information about an absentee ballot, that's available on the Board of Elections website as well. And if you don't want to vote early or vote by absentee ballot, then you can vote on Election Day, which is November 4th. So we hope in one of those three ways that you'll participate in the election this fall. Thanks for watching this evening, and thanks to our candidates.